Yes.
Todd, you ready?
Absolutely.
All right, let me just know the way. Recording. All right, good evening. Welcome. I'd like to call the Centerton City Council meeting order for July eighth, twenty twenty five. Would everyone in attendance please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
United States of America. It's here.
For which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
In the visible.
The liberty and justice for all.
Would you all remain standing? And Wendy, would you release some prayer?
Oh, no. Thank you for this community. Thank you for those who serve in the community, those in the employees, and also those on council, our mayor, our city attorney, Lord, our clerk, Lord. We work so hard to try to make none this city the best city in the area. And, Lord, we just ask that you guide us through our decisions, that our decisions are made with an intent to to serve the community in the best way possible. And at the end, we also want to make sure that our the needs of you and your will, that we we see that and seek that in all things. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Okay.
But Thompson, here. Justin Cowherd is not here. Wendy Henson.
Here.
Josie Reed. Joshua Hagan.
Here.
And Cody Miles.
Here.
All right. So first thing on the agenda is approval of the city council meeting minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty five. They are your Dropbox, and no changes have been made. I'd like to make motion to adopt those minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Are you a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Second by Wendy. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone oppose? All right. Next is acknowledge and receipt of the Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes, and the Planning Commission meet. Well, I'm sorry, let me back that up. Water Sewer Commission meeting minutes from May twentieth, and then also the Planning Commission meeting minutes from June third, twenty twenty five. Some like to acknowledge receipt of those.
So much.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Reckon.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You want to pose? All right, next is financial statements. So we are fifty percent through the year, and right now we've got about sixty percent, a little over sixty percent of our revenue, and our expenses is just one percent over where we should be. Some of the notable things on here is it looks like our county sales tax is just just tracking right at the fifty percent mark. And then our city sales tax is about fifty-four percent, and building permits are still doing well. We're about half million through the year so far. So and then looking through all departments, everything's good. Going to the road one down there. I'm learning to use the page down button. Okay, we're almost there. Hold on. Sorry about that. I used to page down, but before I blanked the whole screen out. So I get a little gunshot now. Okay, on the street fund, here we are. So revenue wise, he's at fifty-five percent, and expenditures is thirty-three percent. That's a little low, but he's doing some major projects right now, some overlays and things. So that that will certainly change in the next month or two. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
I I have one question.
Sure.
So where it says fee special accountant. It has a thirty-six hundred dollar budget, but then you go further down, and then there's another one that says special council meeting. So can you explain why those are on there separately?
Yeah, the fee. And I have to give a clarification, but the fee is what we charge developer when they, you know, they ask for a special council meeting, the twelve hundred dollar fee, you know, for that. And then the other ones is probably what I'm paying out, but I can clarify, get that clarified. Shannon's not here, but I can get it clarified and get that for you. Let me write that down so I don't. Okay, anything else?
Kenzie answered all my list of questions, so.
And then I'll 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 find out what Wendy asked, and I'll I'll send it to everybody.
Okay.
Oh, all right. So some, okay, and then the court reports attached. So would someone like to make a motion to accept or approve the finance report and the court?
No move.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Joshua. I heard a second here, too. So whatever what you get. All right. All in favor?
Act.
Anyone oppose? All right, next is department reports, and I've had someone from the Water and Sewer Commission to come to our meeting today and just give us an update on our sewer situation.
Well, situation is Decatur filed their application for renewal of their permit and expansion of their authorized treatment capacity. It is at the State Department of Health for review. And they have heard nothing. We know that if they have it and that it's under review. They still anticipate that it will be approved and in place by the end of December. They just think that all the filters will be in place by the end of December. Headwork project will be completed. And we have our regular meeting with the with the mayor up for review, the one going project on this coming Friday.
Mayor Decatur, right?
With the mayor.
Okay, okay. I thought it was for me. I said, what meeting? Better thought, okay.
My child will be meeting with the the mayor of Decatur and his superintendent on Friday. Is our, that's our regular and process review. And that's kind of where it's at.
That was a from Gavin Edwards. Do we have a meeting scheduled for that?
Well.
Gavin Edwards asked for a meeting with council.
Mr. Gavin Edwards. That has to do with.
Has to do with steps.
To use the steps that is in Senator. And there are some people that don't quite understand, apparently have not, don't have an understanding how that works and who's responsible. But basically, if we approve it, when it's approved and it's installed, it's licensed by the state. It's operated by the developers operating company. The residents that are attached to it paying fees for its operation at the time when the sewer capacity is available, and they make their connection to this, to our system. The treatment plant will be disengaged, and there will be the required remediation, and there will be no other issues. The company that that's involved has a very successful track record and has nine active operating systems currently.
So I talked about today, he is going to set a meeting up.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we're trying to set a meeting up for Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
He's gonna, when I find out, I'll let y'all know. But, you know, and I've responded back to Gavin or his other guy. And I let the council know, too. I've kept them in loop because I remember the last water meeting that several of us attended. I know there was going to be a meeting set, so I just want to make sure.
Reason not to help this week is that our superintendent is out this week.
Yeah, no, he he told, he he seen me today, and he said he's gonna get it set up, so. And this in all fairness, I mean, he contacted us Thursday afternoon on this meeting, and we were off Friday, and, you know, so we had to give everybody a chance to set it up. But but he will. He he told me he would, so. And I've 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 passed it on to the council. All right, thank you, sir. Wait, wait, wait. Anybody got any questions for Bob? I'm sorry. Or Don. Don's the chairman. He's here, too. All right.
I just have a a quick question. I don't know if it's Don or who could answer, but from from what Bob said, did I hear that correctly, that once the sewer gets ready to go, they're going to close down the the septic and connect to sewer?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, please, yeah. There are at least two installations, two communities in this county that have been through this process with with developments. It was a proven methodology. There have been no problems.
I feel like at one of our meetings, at the water commission meeting, that this was something that was discussed and and it was determined that this was not going to be feasible. They weren't going to do it, and now it sounds like that's a great idea. So I'm a little confused on that part.
Well, I can say it appears that there was pushback for certain employees in other departments.
So is this a possibility for other developers that are waiting?
But have they gotten the space to do it? And get the license from the state?
Essentially, a temporary solution to the problem.
That's all it was ever proposed as.
Oh, by no more. Oh, here comes Don. I will know more after a meeting. We go a step-down system. I just want to make you understand that it still requires state approval. Still have to file against state approval, but we have no control over how long that approval process takes.
I mean, December.
Anybody else for these fellows?
Thank you.
All right, next, before we get into our business, we'll open up for public comments. And I want to remind everybody we started leaking again. Okay. All right, we're just here. Here. Be careful when you walk up.
Yes.
And we'll call it back. So actually, Nicole was on there. She'll call him. She she she's looking at things on your way back. Hey, we tried. They were out here like two, two or three times last week.
I want him to slip up.
Okay.
Good point.
All right, thanks, Todd. All right, so I will open up for for public comments, and I want to remind everybody, I think, last meeting, this is not a question-answer session. You know, we'll listen to your comments. If we need to address something this evening, I'll move it down to other business. If it's something that needs to be addressed, or I need to get back with somebody, or if it's something simple, we're gonna do that. When you do come up, you get three minutes.
Yes, that's a reminder for both sides. It's not a question and answer.
Not a question and answer.
Right, right.
So I will say.
Said he's not here tonight.
Oh, okay. Oh, so you do get three minutes, and if you would come up, and this is for anything that's on tonight's agenda, include fireworks. We are going to have a discussion later. So if you want to say something about, you know, fireworks or, you know, please say it under.
This is the time.
This is the time, or any of these ordinances that are coming up. Now, if you have any comments for that, if you will say your name and your address, so he can put it in the minutes. So with that, I will open up for public comments. Does anybody want to address the council? Come on up. And I'm going to turn Eric Fisher back up so he stops speaking. Thirteen twenty-five Main Street. Good evening, yeah. You didn't give your address.
He just did. Seven two seven one nine.
Get your phone.
At the close of the last council meeting, Josh suggested that it was time to take a look at mayor salaries compensation, which I agreed with. I thought was the good recommendation. I think the members of the council did. And but the decision was, let's put it off and get the municipal league data. We have what other cities in the area are paying. That was posted on your, I don't know if it looked at it, but I did a fair amount of analysis on it, comparisons, and since since we're looking at a salary for a future, I think, was where Joshua was addressing it, you're really looking at a salary for the current and future because we have a mayor. And if if his salary is out of line, one way or the other, with the other local municipalities, it should be taken into consideration and would be for a future mayor. That said, just as a way of background, Mayor Bill became, Mayor Edwards became a mayor of Centerton as the first elected mayor after Don Barrows slash Ken Williams resigned, which had to be.
I was I was I was elected after Bobby Griffin, two thousand and eleven.
Right, well.
I I succeeded Bobby Griffin.
But publicly elected. First elected mayor.
She was appointed.
She was appointed.
Oh, I got, sorry. Let me be quiet and let you talk.
Make this Q and A if you want. Anyway, I thought we ought to go back. The bill's data started with two, twenty twenty. Since he's been mayor since twenty eleven. The population of Centerton in the census of twenty ten was ninety-five hundred and fifteen. The numbers off of the mayor's data says twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-five. That's a hundred and seventy-one percent increase in population since he became mayor.
Thirty-five seconds. Just giving you a heads up.
Well, if you shut me off, you can, but I've got a lot of data here. So that's your choice. Bella Vista's grown twenty-six percent in the same time. Lowell fifty-eight percent. Cylone Springs fourteen percent. Rogers seven percent. Anyway, in addition, there were three parks in Centerton with very minimal equipment when he became mayor. There's now fourteen with, I think, pretty nice equipment out there. If you look at the budgets of the cities in question, I eliminated Fayetteville because they have a huge two hundred and forty thousand, forty million dollar annual budget. I don't know where they get that money from. But Centerton's average budget dollars per citizen is six hundred and fifty-two dollars per year, based on the current year. Bella Vista, seven forty-three. Farmington, six, sixty-eight. Lowell, fifteen hundred and twenty. P Ridge, eleven hundred and seventy-three. Cylone Springs, nineteen hundred and three. And for what it's worth, Rogers, thousand eighty-four. I did not do Bentonville because it includes the dollars for their utility company. If you look at the annual dollars per citizen of mayor's salary, Centerton is three dollars and ninety-five cents per year per resident. Bella Vista's three ninety-five, but Farmington is six eighty-seven. Lowell, nine thirty-five. P Ridge, nine eighty. Cylone Springs, seven forty-seven, seven dollars and forty-seven cents. The average of those is seven dollars and forty-nine cents. If you were to take the Centerton population and attach it to that seven dollars and forty-nine cents, you're talking about an annual salary compensation of? Anybody? Hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. My preferred analysis was the mayor's salary as a percent of the city budget. Centerton, it's sixty point five basis points. That means sixty, sixty percent of one percent of the budget is the mayor's salary. In Bella Vista, it's fifty-three basis points. But Farmington, it's one percent. Lowell, it's sixty-two basis points. P Ridge, it's eighty-four basis points. And Cylone Springs, well, it doesn't really count, but three, fourteen basis points. If you take the average of Bella Vista, Farmington, Lowell, and P Ridge, the mayor's salary equivalent should be a hundred and twenty-six thousand. If you throw add in Cylone Springs, it's a hundred and fourteen thousand. So it would appear to me, just for what it's worth, that our bill's underpaid by somewhere between fourteen thousand and twenty-six thousand dollars a year, and is, and the future mayor would be the same. And that analysis could be rerun again year after year. But that's how it fits within the cities that are somewhat comparison. I didn't do Fayetteville and a couple of other, or Springdale, because they're just much, much larger budgets and much, much larger city populations.
Thank you, Chris.
Anyone else? The water should stop now. I turned it. I turned it off. Well, I turned it on. Give your name and the address.
My name is Alan Craighead. Who's the address of the city hall, two hundred minutes from drive? I'm a city engineer, but this is comments that aren't pertaining to my job. It was also with the mayor's salary. I looked at that, the data he provided, and I know at the end of last meeting, the recommendation was a hundred thousand dollars. Bill's currently, current salary is like a hundred and two. So he's, this is his fourth term. Rather than Chris saying we should up the minimum salary for someone that comes in brand new, I think it should be lower than the hundred thousand. Sixty-five, that's that. Not enough. It's not really a living wage from the median wage around here. So going up makes sense. However, the hundred thousand seems like it's too much. You're saying the mayor on his fourth term, when if he leaves, then someone else comes in, you're going to put him at ninety-nine percent of his salary as a starting thing? I figured a better starting wage is about eighty-seven, six hundred. You do that with the typical wage scale raises that we receive, four or five percent. By the end of their term, if they're doing a good job, they'd be exceeding that hundred thousand dollar value as it is, that growth rate is for that whole term. That puts them where you want. So then for a second mayor, they're still going up, or second term for mayor, it makes more sense that way that you do that. And if you want to do jumps exceeding that four to five percent, which is the typical, it's easier to hit that. But part of that is, right now, we don't know what our budgets are going to be. Right now, we've hit developments pretty well, but we're going to start losing money because we're not having as much development right now with the Decatur issue. So with less homes being built, are we going to lose some of my, on our building permits and everything else? That I don't see the jump going from him at a hundred and one and change to someone next, or in two years, right at a hundred, ninety-nine percent of that, when given a full term, they would then dearly exceed that anyway with raises. So sixty-five, too low. Hundred, that what you guys proposed at the end of last time, I believe is too high. So.
Thank you.
Excellent.
You mean, I guess.
John Box, I live at seven forty-two Apple Ridge Drive. Talk about a couple of things. First of all, the mayor's salary, which we were speaking about. I saw the paperwork that you put out that you're proposing that it be listed at a hundred thousand for incoming mayor. I feel that that is a decent starting salary, especially considering the data that Chris just brought forth and surrounding communities. In comparison, though, to Bill's current salary being one oh two, I feel it's likely low, considering that he is in his fourth term. His merit has increased him from his starting of fifty to where he's at now. But again, he could be considered for raises. This should be separate from the current conversation of incoming mayor. What is our mayor's seat worth? And I think that the hundred thousand you have set is probably fair, based on municipal league studies that Bill said have come back. Side. Second, I'd like to bring up the fireworks. I'm not sure precisely what you want to discuss about fireworks tonight. But in my view, I feel like our city has fair policy for fireworks. I know that we do have some people that break the rules in a little way, just get a little overzealous with their fireworks. But I think for for the most part, it's good for our community. It breeds the the sense of community and togetherness. You sell the families getting together and having a good time. I think that's what you don't see a lot of in this community, although it's with explosions, it gets loud. But I think for the most part, people are consider considerate of other families, and there's good revenue for the people who sell fireworks in the city. I think they would like to continue as well. I think.
Me, my name, Todd. One fifty Coventry. I'm only going to speak on the mayor's salary. I'm going to preach like I always preach in our budgeter, our budget meetings. I'm going to agree with Chris Mooney. We have to continue to stay progressive, guys. I mean, yes, it, we have to, you know, there'll be some sacrifices. There'll be a little bit of hurdles at first, but we've got to continue to move forward. And then we will, we did that with our current salary of our staff, department heads. So why, why wouldn't we do it with our mayor? I I think a hundred thousand is a very good starting point, but if we're not shifting that, we should be shifting our current mayor's salary up. The the amount, I don't know, but I I think he should be fairly compensated as well with that shift, but mainly because we need to stay competitive on all levels, just not mayor, but our staff, our department heads everywhere. We need to be competitive with other cities in our surrounding area. All I had to say. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. All right, so before we start, would somebody make a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only? Also suspend the rule to read all ordinances on three separate occasions.
One minute, second.
Cliff and Josie second. And roll call, sir.
Thompson, yes. Justin Cowherd, just remind that one. Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
And Cody Miles.
Yes.
Okay, so our first ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one. This is the mayor's salary that everybody's talked about that we left off in the last council meeting with. What I, what I have here is it's an ordinance that will change the minimum, and if you decide to change mine, you can do it the same ordinance. This is right out of the code book. I did like, like has been stated, I did reach out to other cities. Actually, I talked to one in Airport and gave me his salary. Rogers, one seventy-eight, but and some of these annual budgets, I looked at them, a lot of them I Googled, but like for Cylone Springs budget, for instance, you know, when I looked at that, fifty-six million dollars, that was the electric utility. I think probably Bentonville is the same way. I just looked at the audit statements and just got the total numbers out of there. If we looked at ours realistically, I mean, what, sixteen? That's just our our general fund budget. If we put our street fund budget in there, and I'll bring up to about nineteen million. And then some of these had their water departments in there, too. If we did that, that would probably double us. Because I think the water department budget is probably fourteen, fifteen million. I'm just not exactly sure, but somewhere in that ballpark.
What's Walmart going to add? Exactly. What will Walmart add roughly?
We, again, I'm just estimating from, they tell me everything, they'll probably add sales tax-wise, probably two to three million dollars a year, just for that. And then, of course, when we see dirt break on it, we'll see other things coming, too. And to give you an update on that, we have revised plans from them now. And they also have issue, things worked out with the sewers, so that that's all worked out. They will be able to proceed forward, so. But back to this, and Bentonville, I'm not sure. I mean, I know that says two thirty-nine. That was a two thousand twenty-four number. And you know, and I'm sure that includes their electric utility, you know, because they have their own electric company over there, their electric utility and that. But again, I didn't see any breakdowns. So what I did on this right side, I put the cities, you know, in our area. I want to point out like Cylone Springs. Cylone Springs is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That CM means city manager.
That's how I was going to.
Yeah, they they have a city manager, but the city manager does the same thing as a mayor. It's just a different form of government. Now, you know, I talked to the previous city manager. I see it's one fifty, and he said the new one that's coming in will also be making one fifty, the cage. P Ridge, you know, I know Chris included some of these numbers, but he's first-term mayor, and he's he's starting off at a hundred thousand. So Bella Vista, first time, a hundred and thirty-one thousand. But I won't go, I left it there for yourself, and I put the terms in it, and so now some of these are twenty twenty-four numbers. K Springs, Springdale, Fayetteville, because I emailed all these folks, I didn't get anything back, so I just got it off the information I had available to me, you know, for their salaries.
This didn't come from the municipal, he got it, right? Most of it came from?
Yeah, some of it come from the municipal salary studies out there. The twenty twenty-fours came from the municipal. Some of these cities are not listed on the on the on the new salary study, including our own city. And I'm trying to figure out why, because, you know, I believe we did fill out the survey, but we'll, 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 we'll work with that with them. But this is what you got. I didn't put, and I didn't put growth rates. I did put populations. I do have a sheet in here for you that has all the populations that I stuck in there, showed everything from, it goes from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. And I think Mr. Mooney highlighted the growth rates for for most of these cities, so. You know, financially, we're in very good shape, but I just wanted to bring this up. So anyway, I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything about it, make any recommendations or whatever, leave it alone. I mean, that's certainly up to you. I was just trying to to carry on the last conversation. And now is probably a good time to do this because, you know, elections are coming up. And, you know, then I'm sure people will start announcing for for candidacy for any office anywhere. Probably, you know, after the first of the year, I'm sure is a good ideal time to do that, you know, if they're considered, you know, so. Anyway, that's that's where we're at. And I did, I put the hundred thousand in there. I highlighted because Todd's got it over here. It's blank for both my salary and that. He'll fill them in after. It's blank for both my salary and that, he'll fill them in after, if if a decision is made. He'll fill those in, uh, for whatever the council decides to do. Uh, to me, looking at it, looking at what I've. Found in some of these other mayors in these other cities, I found a hundred thousand was a good fair start. I I just Bill's opinion, but I think just based on on that information and population, everything, I think that was a very fair start. And, uh, and then the one-on-one, five eighty-eight, seventy-two is, that's just what my current salary is, I just highlighted it there, so you see, so. Anyway, there's where we're at.
I'd like to speak a little bit here if I could. First of all, Chris, thank you for your summary, you're. Pretty, pretty close to some numbers that I found, the city actually did a study, salary study in December of twenty-one. Um, and in that study, it was concluded that the mayor's salary should have been adjusted. At that time to a minimum of one oh four, three thirty. And I don't know why no action was taken on that study. Um, but I think the one hundred thousand is probably prudent, uh, for a starting mayor. And I think, uh, we should also be considering, uh, the current mayor's salary, and it would be my recommendation that we consider up to a fifteen percent increase. On the current salary to be paid out throughout the remainder of the year at that level.
The reason why nothing was taken at that time was 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 COVID related. Um, we were fairly uncertain about what kind of income we would have as a city, so no action was taken then.
So, I mean, the numbers that Chris shared are pretty similar to what was provided from that. Um, study, it 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 said that, uh. The city should be paying eighty percent of the average, which the average was one thirty, four thirteen, so eighty percent would be one oh four, three thirty. And that was three and a half years ago, so we were, we were way behind then, we're even farther behind now, so.
Yeah, I'm also in agreement with the hundred thousand for sure, and I am in agreement with the increase in the current sal- salary for the mayor. Um, cause I think it is is definitely due. I mean, our mayor is a twenty-four seven mayor, I think we all know that, we can all agree on that. He not only does his regular, what I would say, regular mayor, you know, services, but he's a weatherman for us, he just does a lot of things. I talked to him briefly about how much money revenue he's helped create from. Grants, the grant money alone that he's got, so I definitely would make a recommendation to increase his salary. Um, the number I was looking at was a hundred and thirty thousand.
Wow.
So, I'll I'll hop in now on that, um, I was doing the math too, thank you, uh, Bill for. Providing this information and stuff, I think it looks. Uh, very accurate, the hundred thousand again, I'm in agreement for a, uh, for a a minimum starting pay. But I went a little bit further here, cause I asked, uh. Mayor Bill to to tell me what his average increase was every year. And aside from two years where they didn't do a raise. And then they did a seventeen-five, he said the average in in all fifteen years has been around four percent. And if we were to have started him, this is just for information purposes. If we were to have started him at a hundred thousand dollars a year, fifteen years ago. Um, and added four percent every year, he'd be over a hundred and eighty thousand right now. And just to add some. Some insight there, and Farmington is the only mayor on this list. That has that has more terms than Bill has as mayor. Most of, it looks like most of the mayors are just not going that long. And, uh, so they're not seeing that kind of increase. I'm looking at this from sixty-five to a hundred thousand, we're looking at what, thirty-five percent raise? And if we were to raise his salary by thirty-five percent, just to match the raise we do on the. The beginning salary, it's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand and change. So I'm right there at one thirty to one forty-five is where I'm at. Uh, if we just wanted to match percentage to percentage and put it one thirty-seven. Um, that makes it, you know, in my opinion, um. Similar, and it it doesn't put it at the, if we did the continual four percent. Year over year raise on it, so.
I agree with the hundred, I think finding what the right number is could be argued all day. Uh, you can't go back fifteen year or to the beginning and say the hundred K would be the starting salary then, that's just. That's not the case, but, uh, I think one fifteen's too low, though. I I do, I mean, based upon your fourth term, potentially going into your fifth. So I I think one thirty at the high end would probably be an acceptable number without being argued of. Going higher than we probably should, but it can be argued all day, so. One thirty sounds fair based upon the math that's been thrown out there that Chris provided, good basis there. Josh obviously did his math with it, I did my own math, I came up with a one fifteen, one sixteen number, so. But that was on a lower end, depending upon how you look at it.
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things, I've talked to several residents, um. Because I think obviously that's important for us to consider where they stand. Um, I've had a couple of residents saying, leave it where it is. Um, a couple have said there needs to be a, there needs to be some sort of middle ground in the sense of. They feel like hundreds too much, um, sixty-five's too low, some said eighty-five to ninety thousand. To be a starting point, just kind of to be in the middle. Um, and so I'm still not fully convinced, um, I feel like. You know, I I will just stand on the fact that I believe that whoever comes in, if someone else is elected. Um, that that person, um, is coming to serve the city, um. I know at the last meeting, there were conversations about, you know, it'd be a pay cut for some, there was some. A Facebook post that was made, um, that, you know, other people coming from, you know. Another another place, I don't know that we should consider that fully, in the sense of. Working for a corporation and then coming into a municipal office, um, and and comparing salaries in that aspect. I do believe that we also need to look at the caliber of people that would come into the position, um, and. I I, the other question is, is that it was brought up that from from Josh at the last meeting. That we talk about the beginning salary. Um, and then we talked about the possibility of raising the mayor's salary, but it was my understanding that that's done towards the end of the year. So I didn't really understand that conversation, I do feel like these should be separate, um. Because you would also look at performance and and different things, I do feel like that should be a separate conversation. Um, so, so I'm still kind of on the fence about, um, the starting salary. Um, I do, I do feel like it's too low, I'm not comfortable with a hundred K, so.
And I did have Brian research the the other part, and he said, that's fine, there's no statute says you can't raise it. And these are together in the code book, so, you know, and and I actually had a conversation with a citizen right before this meeting. And, you know, probably now is the right time to do this, because elections are next year. You know, I think some people already consider doing it, that's okay, that's that's everybody's choice to do this. Uh, but God forbid something happened to me. Cause this is two years since I had my heart surgery and I, you know, I mean, seriously, I might not even been here, you know? And if if something's not done, then it'll be sixty-five for whoever takes my place, so. This is, I mean, I hope nothing happens to me, but. You know, now, now, and I said, I had the same question, and Brian said, you can do it, so. Um, but and they are, they do work hand in hand, so.
I do, I do also wanna ask like what your other council members' opinions are on the. The issues that that Alan brought up, cause I think those are valid issues as far as like. Permits and where we are with wastewater and, you know. Do we have the ability to do that in the event that, you know, we continue to have those issues, cause that's a pretty big. Thing going on right now, so those things also being considered.
I think actually Cody is kinda put the nail in it when he asked about Walmart, so, and and they're very sincere about coming, so.
And when is that planning?
So it should be on the planning commission, probably within the next sixty days, we we have the plans, they're being reviewed now.
But when would we actually see that, I guess is my question.
Probably a year, I don't know, but they they start seeing their turn, I'm sure other things will start coming. And financially, like I said, we're doing fine.
It's maybe fifteen months when they break ground.
And again, you heard, you know, Don, they 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 have a plan and, you know, they they also have. They're looking at other connections also, you know, their meeting, so. I think right now, building permit wise, we're still okay, but. And I think Decatur is working diligently to get this done, because their tiger is calling them, no, just kidding, but, anyway. Any more discussion?
As far as twenty twenty-five goes, Wendy, if. If we did the one hundred thousand minimum, if the mayor's salary increases to one thirty, the impact of the twenty twenty-five budget is roughly fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
He's only gonna get that for the remainder of the year, so it wouldn't be the full thirty thousand for this year, so. That increase.
Pro-rated.
Would be spelled next year, and as far as the hundred thousand minimum. He's already being paid more than that, so if he loses the seat, it's filled by somebody else, we're still gonna see a reduction in that rate unless we choose to pay that person more. So we're looking at a fifteen thousand dollar impact to this year's budget, based on the numbers that we've talked about.
Anyone else? Councils? Josh, you got anything else?
Hmm, make a motion, we make the minimum a hundred thousand dollars and put your salary at a hundred and thirty thousand.
We have a motion.
Second.
Have a second, any more discussion? Let's have a roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Wendy Henson?
Yeah.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
Cody Miles?
Yes.
Alright, thank you all, alright, moving on.
We need to read that. We need to read it, yeah.
I didn't tune, I'm trying to get it, alright.
That was, that was the motion to set the figures.
Sorry, sorry, alright, go ahead, read it something.
Right, ordinance number two thousand twenty-five. I didn't mean to make one. Uh, and ordinance of many incident in municipal code section two point one four three, compensation.
Okay, now, somebody make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one.
Salute.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Now we do a roll call again.
Thompson, yes. Wendy Henson? Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
And Cody Miles?
Yes.
Alright, now we'll move on.
Uh, Bill, I didn't, I didn't hear Wendy. Oh, just connection, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
She said no.
Okay.
Alright, next is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two. Uh, this is an ordinance to repeal or replace ordinance twenty eighteen dash forty. To accept the dedication of a twenty-five foot right of way on Bates Lane. So what happened in July of twenty eighteen, the city council adopted ordinance twenty eighteen dash forty. Accepted a twenty-five foot right of way. Uh, but it was discovered that, uh, it was incorrect, so I believe we're now accepting a thirty, yeah, so, uh. It was actually a dedication of thirty feet, so that's that's what we're doing instead of twenty-five feet, we're just correcting a scribbler's error. Any questions? You're none, counselor.
Alright, ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three-two. City of Centerton and ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number two thousand eighteen four zero. To accept the dedication of twenty-five foot right of way on Bates Lane by Julio Caesar Valdez. And Rigoberto Mendoza. Per track split platform property located in section seven township nineteen north range thirty-one west. City of Centerton Benton County, Arkansas, and declare an emergency.
Someone like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two. And we got a motion from Cliff, we have a second?
Second.
We got a second, Cody, roll call, sir.
Thompson, yes. Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
Cody Miles?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, emergency clause, yeah, sorry.
Action for, uh, the city council of the city of Centerton, Arkansas has determined that an emergency is hereby found to exist. And this ordinance will be necessary for the correction of a scribbler's errors. Shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval.
Well, you make motion to adopt the emergency clause, someone, we have a motion, we have a second? Roll call, sir.
Is that you, Cliff?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Wendy Henson? Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
And Cody Miles?
Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three. Uh, this is an order to accept pedestrian right of way, uh, easement dedication from K O Storage. Questions on this? Okay, counselor.
City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three-three. Ordinance accepting pedestrian easement dedication from K O Storage LLC for property located. In part of section five township nineteen north range thirty-one west, city of Centerton Benton County, Arkansas.
Someone like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three.
Make the motion.
Cody's made the motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Josie, roll call.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
And Cody Miles?
Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four. Uh, this is repeal in ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, which accepted utility easements. Uh, so what happened, uh, there was a plat filed and, uh. Bradshaw Properties decided to pull that plat, correct? Come on up, help me, I I guess I got it wrong. Help me out.
Okay, the property owner, they had submitted a plat, it had gone through the entire process. And then at the, uh. We did the ordinance to accept the easements and to record the plat, but then they pulled the plats. So we need to repeal the ordinance. And then at such time, if they choose to go forward, then we'll redo it all.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any questions?
Alright, ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three-four and ordinance repealing ordinance. Five dash one three, which accepted utility easements dedicated by Bradshaw Properties LLC.
Someone like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four. You have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Wendy Henson?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
Cody Miles?
Yes.
Alright, next is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five. Accepting the final plat of Magnolia Landing Phase Two subdivision. Uh, this is located on Vaughn and Tycoon Roads. Uh, this was, uh, heard at the last planning commission meeting on July first and, uh, was recommended for approval to the city council. Uh, we do have in our possession, uh, warranty bonds for water and sewer for four hundred and forty thousand and. Twenty-eight dollars, street drainage six hundred fifty-four thousand four ninety-seven twenty-three. Any questions? And this is seventy buildable lots, sorry, seventy lots and fifteen duplex lots.
Alright, city of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash three-five. An ordinance accepting the final plat of Magnolia Landing Subdivision Phase Two. Creating residential lots thirty through one fourteen, uh, seventy SF lots and fifteen duplex lots and tracks C, D, E, and F. In the city of Centerton, section eighteen, chip nineteen north range thirty-one west, Benton County, Arkansas.
Someone like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five.
Salute.
You have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Cliff Thompson?
Yes.
Wendy Henson? Josie Reed?
Yes.
Joshua Hagan?
Yes.
Cody Miles?
Yes.
Alright, next is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six. Uh, at our last council meeting, we did surplus two, uh, Dodge Chargers. Uh, one was a two thousand sixteen, the other one was a two thousand nineteen. Uh, one of them has a blown motor and the other one, uh, has some front, serious front end issues. And Chief Harper came to me and invited me to, you know, the city here in Arkansas, small city, that. We'd like to have these and, uh, we have the ability to donate them to another municipality if we want to, but it has to be done by ordinance. I know some of other cities around here do the same thing for a lot of the smaller towns here, so, uh. Uh, this is what I'm bringing in front of you to your consideration.
They would take them in the past.
Yeah, oh yeah, sorry, yeah, they will pick them up, actually, Cody, was, cause we were talking about transporting, and I believe. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Yeah. They will pick them up. Actually, Cody was, because we were talking about transporting and I believe they're going to pay to move them if, if you all approve this.
Good evening. Uh, yes, if y'all approve the, the transfer of ownership, uh, I have, uh, contacted a, um, a transport broker. Um, they're going to transport each one of them for four hundred and fifty dollars each, and that'll be paid for by, uh, Arkansas City.
Well, tell them a little bit about Arkansas. It's like a small community, like a few thousand.
Yes, uh, very small community. Um, their police chief is a part time police chief. Um, and they just, they have little to nothing over there. It's a community that is pretty well directly east of McGee and north of Lake Village. Uh, so it's down there in the very, uh, southeast, uh, corner of the state. So, uh, they just had that small budget, no vehicles. Um, and so they just need a little bit of help.
Any questions?
All right. City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash three six, and ordinance authorizing the donation of two Dodge Charger police vehicles from the city of Centerton, Arkansas, uh, to the city of Arkansas City, Arkansas, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the donation on the city's behalf and for other purposes.
Someone to make, someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirty six.
Some.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
Cody Miles. Yes.
All right. That is, and I will let Anthony come and ask her any questions. Uh, this is ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirty seven. Uh, this is waiving the bidding for a Dodge Ram fifty five hundred truck and accessories.
That's key. That's key. Accessories is key.
So kind of tell them a little bit about the.
Well, it's just a multi-use specialty truck. It's a, uh, it's a snowplow, um, has aluminum back end. So we've had issues with it ru- rusting in the back because of the salt brine we used during the winter. Um, but this is a truck that'll be used all year long, just not for the winter. The accessories are the winter. Um, there's a generator on it, uh, uh, compressor and a front end plow, um, to help accommodate the winter.
Waiving competitive bidding is because this is a specialty vehicle.
This specialty vehicle is being built in Oklahoma City. Um, this was a budgeted item. It's not something I just randomly chose. Um, when we did our research last year, this company had the lowest price vehicles. We couldn't get anything local. It's that's typical with snow vehicles. Um, but what we do, because we are a smaller town, we utilize those vehicles all year long. So we get vehicles that are, you know, got a front end attachments that we can take off during the summer months, throw back on during the winter months. Uh, but it's a tool truck. Um, it has tools and it'll be utilized in many different avenues, but it was a budgeted item.
It looks like the total is one forty six, sixty two, fifty nine.
Yeah. In the orders, I put amount up to one forty seven. This rounded it up. Any more questions for Anthony?
You gonna come hit my driveway? When I sit in your driveway, we tear up curbs and we get too close to them.
Hi.
Sure. There's some questions.
To the hall goals and parked cars.
Counselor.
Ordnance number two thousand twenty five dash three seven, an ordinance waiving bidding requirements for the purchase of a Dodge Ram fifty five hundred truck and accessories from Industrial Truck Equipment Incorporated, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, for the Centerton Building Works Department.
Someone like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash thirty seven.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Cliff Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
Cody Muntz. Yes.
All right. So our first resolution is resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty. Uh, this is an agreement with Garver and also Urban Land Institute for a downtown study, and Megan Brown is with us, and so is, uh, Juliet, I drew a plane with, with Garver, and they want to give a little present, little presentation and then, uh, we, and then I'll, we'll go from there. So.
So I'll start. A quick reminder, Megan Brown with, uh, Urban Land Institute. I serve as director of operations, but I also serve as program manager for the Small Cities Initiative. I've come and presented to you all a couple of times now on the program and kind of the stages that we're at. We've been at, the last time I was here, we had just finished the TAP report and we're in the stages of receiving submissions from consultants that wanted to do the work. So, um, this, we are now at the point of the program where a, um, consultant has been selected. So we had a small selection committee. Um, Josie served on, is Alan still here? Members of the staff, um, and council and planning commission that served on that. They went through, um, seven interviews over a couple of weeks and, um, selected Garver ISG to do the work. So, um, the couple of, I'm going to turn it over to Juliet in a minute to talk through the actual, um, their scope and kind of what this particular resolution is about. Um, this is not additional funding that's coming out of the city's budget. That has already been, um, uh, included in the resolution that was approved by the program. Um, and that was the biggie. I wanted to make sure that we clarify. Um, and then, yeah, and then from here on out, I'll just kind of just turn it over to you first. Yeah, sure. Um, just I guess for those, I'll just kind of give a brief overview of what we're looking at. And I used to, you saw our memo that has like the scope outline attached to it. Um, I want to flip to the next.
There you go.
So you know, so this is kind of the key personnel that'll be working on the project, uh, myself from Garver, Ryan King from ISG, um, Amanda Golden from Designing Local, and then, um, TJ Wells, who's also a Centerton resident, um, from ISG and Zach Moore, um, with Garver. Uh, just kind of give you an idea. So a majority of us are local to Northwest Arkansas. Um, and then if you want to flip to the next page, just a little bit of information on the three firms, you know, teamed together. Um, the way we're doing it, it's a contract will between, be between Garver and the city and ULI, and then, um, ISG and Designing Local listed on there as subcontractors. They'll, they'll have individual contracts with us. Uh, there'll be a whole bunch of other people, you know, from all of our firms working on this project, um, pulled as needed to address, um, you know, all the different aspects of the project. Um, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, so we had a topless approach, um, that is kind of three phases. We have a discovery and listening. If you flip to the next slide, let's see. Okay, go back. Sorry. It, it doesn't translate all, all the time well between PowerPoint and PDA. So that's awful. But, and discovery and listings, that's going to be when we're in the beginning stages where we're talking to stakeholders in the community, um, understanding, you know, kind of what's on the ground and, um, what the, we've got around the process. Then the second, the ideation phase, it's going to be, you know, that's really the development of the plan and looking at all the different, um, aspects that were brought up in the, uh, request for qualifications that we responded to, um, that generated from the, the TAP panel, um, that y'all are familiar with, um, from earlier this year. And then that will also have a community engagement phase. And then we'll go into the, you know, the deliverables, which will be master plan documents, both for the, the downtown as it exists, and then the new, uh, you know, town center, new town, but I'm not sure exactly what we're calling it right now, but, um, that area as well. And of course, that will also have, um, additional stakeholder engagement. And, you know, eventually will be brought to the planning commission and then to y'all to consider for adoption. I think, I think we're good. I have more detailed things in case you have any other questions, but that was, I just want to kind of go through the overview.
I have a question. TJ currently is within our water commission. Is that still good?
Yeah, there's no conflict there, right?
I, I couldn't hear a question.
TJ Wells' private employer is, uh, ISG, and he does serve on a water and sewer commission. I don't, he don't see no conflict with that, right?
I'd have to think about it, but, uh, I don't. First thoughts would be no.
Any more questions for Juliet or? So, so let's talk a little bit about the contract. Me and Rabels talked about this two or three times today. So we do have a draft contract. We were provided this a little bit after lunch. Um, that was drafted by, uh, by, by Garver. Uh, this contract has to be reviewed by ULI, then also by Brian. Um, and again, it, it's draft, uh, on, on page thirteen of it, I believe. Yeah, it's in there. Okay. On page thirteen, uh, the scope is missing right now. They will put that in there, uh, you know, and then also on page fourteen, uh, the lump sum, uh, and the proposed, it, it, the lump sum is one seventy five, but that's the total. Then we're responsible for twenty percent of that, which we've already approved and got budgeted, have budgeted.
We have clarification. Twenty percent of the, the grant funding. So this, I just, just want to provide some clarification. The grant is paying for this portion of it. Then, yeah.
Sorry. All right. So what we'd like to do, I, I said, I've talked to Brian. I, I believe we still need a little bit more information from Garver. Uh, we want to move this forward, uh, because they want to, to have, you know, start having some community engagement at Center today. However, I don't believe that, talking to Brian, we're really forward, you know, comfortable moving forward right at the moment. However, uh, we feel like maybe in a couple of weeks, you know, you and I will look at the contract, Brian will look at the contract, uh, and then I can call a special counsel meeting. You know, they're willing to do that so we can get this done. So we can, you know, keep the process moving. Um, and I will re, i- if y'all are willing to, to do that. So I guess I'm asking to table this resolution today. And then when the contract's ready and Brian feels good, and then, then we can move forward. Because this is, there is quite a bit there. Uh, there was a little bit of legal jargon in there that I know Brian's going to have a good time with. No, that's what he does. But I think just talking to, talking to Brian, I think this is probably our best approach. And then we still have a opportunity to keep moving. Now, if you guys get it done quicker, you know, I know there's concern that Brian's going to talk a little bit later about Act five oh five and virtual meetings. We can do this special meeting virtual. Because it's not until after August fourth that we can do it virtually. And he's going to talk about that here in a little while. So we can still knock out a quick virtual meeting. Uh, they've already gave you the presentation that, that, then we, you'll have a chance to look at it, everybody. And I'll have, uh, have them there, at least Juliet, so she can answer any questions. And we, we can move this thing forward and still, you know, because they have to have it done within a year. So if y'all are good with that, I think that's the best approach, you know, just following our, our attorney's advice, which I agree with.
Is that your recommendation, Brent?
Yeah, I mean, that is. I mean, first off, we don't have, what we best, I can tell right now, and I haven't even opened the email, it came this afternoon. But we've got three parties. We have a draft of a contract. I may make revisions. One of the three parties may agree or disagree. Who knows what the final agreement's going to be. And I, and I think that you guys should have the opportunity to take a look at that. I suspect it's going to be real close, but you know, lawyers, we love to.
Just add one clarifying thing. I think what's a little bit unique about this one versus the city working directly with the client, we will be the ones, you know, processing the invoices and kind of serving as that mediator. At this point, they work directly with the city. It's just, um, our ULI national team will absolutely want to have sign off from the city, understanding that they understand the scope. So most of the lift is on ULI and at this point, they're just having, that's why it's that three party.
And Brian's in the worst case scenario, but so. There's any worst case, but we, we want to, you know, get all the blanks filled in. I, I, you know, I, I think that's the right thing to do. So we'll stay in touch as soon as you get this more updated contract. Get it to him and then, and then if you need ULI to be talking to him, we can get everybody in, in contact with each other. We can hammer it out and then I'll, if the council's okay with it. You know, or if you just want to, just leave it up to me and Brian and move forward either way.
And I will say, I mean, we've done in the past, but I'm not a big fan of, uh, when the, the council approves it contingent upon my review. I, I, I think anytime there's a contract, you guys should have the opportunity of looking at it because often, and, and I think Alan can speak to this. Often when I'm reviewing contracts, if there's engineering things or, or, or construction things, I, I, I speak the legalese, but I don't speak some of these other languages.
Planes.
You have, you know, several eyes on it. So I just kind of get that out there.
So I guess with.
The motion to table it.
Hey, we got a motion. We have a second.
A second.
All in favor? Anyone approve, pose? It can't be posed. All right. All right. Just stay in touch. Like I said, we'll, we'll work through it. Say with Lorraine, me, and, you know, we'll all work together and knock this out.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. All right. Last resolution, resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty one. Uh, this is, uh, allowing me to apply for grant with Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism for a fifty fifty, fifty fifty matching grant. Uh, we've had two of these same grants in the past. Our ball fields up on, uh, gamble road, uh, that, that was a fifty fifty match. And, uh, also the splash pad i- is the same thing. We got a fifty fifty badge. So, uh, I'm asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, from these good folks. Uh, we can match it. We have funds to match it with, uh, to put pickleball courts at our new community center, outdoor pickleball courts. Right now on the new community center, you can play pickleball inside on the basketball court, but we want to have some more options and we have it on our future plan. So, uh, I don't know if we'll get it, uh, because we're competing with other cities, but I, I like to throw our name in the hat and, and see if we can pull this off. And we've been successful in the past.
I was under the impression, is Josh back there? Uh, we were talking about the more pickleball courts off of, um, off of gamble, um.
Yeah, it's up in the pines.
This be an addition?
This be, yeah, this is separate from that. Yeah, this will be just on our, our community center property.
I just want to make sure that was still going to go if this came.
Yeah, they, they're getting a donation of land. You'll probably be accepting that soon too. So, yeah. Any questions on this?
I, I have a couple.
Yeah.
Um, we were going to, or as the city, we were going to be charging membership to the community center. Am I reading this correctly? That if we do this grant, then people, then it's open to the public regardless? Would that would just be, am I correct in reading that?
Yes. And this is outdoor. So this won't be inside the actual bit, the building. Anybody have access to this?
Okay. Um, and then the last sentence on the whereas, I just get some clarity on what it means and will provide the local portion of the development cost of the entire project.
So, so that's the land, basically, the land and, and any, any work we have to do. And then we take over all the maintenance of it when it's done.
Okay. That's what that's talking about.
That's the scheduling.
We do. We'll, we'll put it out for bid and everything.
No, the scheduling, once it's up.
The park, the community center will. It'll be scheduled through them, yes.
It'll be fee charged for use.
Uh, not for this outdoor one, no.
Probably won't show what happened. Will they? Most of them are just first come, first served.
Hey, yeah. We'll work through that logistics when that time comes.
That's why they all are outdoors everywhere else.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll work through this. So. Anything else? You guys have anything else? I thought I heard you.
Well, I was thinking I actually talked about here, the price says the project area must remain open and available for use by the public at all reasonable times of the day and the year. Facilities can be reserved for special events, league play, et cetera, but cannot be reserved leased or assigned for exclusive use. And then goes on. So, I mean, it's, I don't know that scheduling, unless we have a, a tournament or something.
Yeah. Plus we'll have the opportunity, if we want to schedule things, we have the, the basketball courts inside that can be used for that too. And then like, like Wendy just pointed out, that, uh, we're, we're putting some more up on, uh, gamble road up there in the pine subdivision. We got about seven or eight acres of land donated. Uh, and I believe Mr. Mooney's going to have some pickleball next to him someday in the near future. So there'll be some opportunities there, but yeah, this will be completely open to the public during, during our hours of operation, which it does say reasonable times of the day and year. Well, that's a good question, though. Anything else? Anybody?
All right. Resolution number two thousand twenty five dash three one, a resolution authorizing the city of Centerton, Arkansas to make application to the Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism for assistance developing recreational facilities.
Someone like make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty one.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Hagan.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yeah.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
Cody Miles.
Yes.
All right. So a while ago, we had applied for some grants. We just need to acknowledge receipt of these grants. So this first grant, there's three of them here. This first grant, uh, is, uh, to design a traffic signal at highway one oh two and WOback. I actually asked for, for one point five million dollars for this. Uh, but they ran out of funding because we're, we're competing with twenty seven other cities. But we were able to negotiate where we at least get it designed. So, you know, we're going to. But they ran out of funding because we're, we're competing with twenty-seven other cities, but we were able to negotiate where we at least get it designed. So, you know, we're gonna get that designed. What the center's designs are dot, and then we'll apply for future grants at a later time, maybe next cycle. So we'll get ahead of this. This next grant was for more sidewalks. You know, right now, we, we've received with this over a million dollars in sidewalks, well, actually about one point five million, because we also have a safer routes to school project, getting ready to start on Gamble Road next week. So this is just for some more, this is some fill-in projects that we, that I presented back when I did this, with like twelve or thirteen locations. You know, because we have a lot of sidewalks, we're just missing some connections in places. So this, this will help connect some of that. So it's five hundred thousand, it's four hundred thousand from the, the grant, and then we match a hundred thousand, eighty, twenty. And then this is one we, we did with, with the city of Bentonville. On Greenhouse Road, this is this additional funding to give right away in utility relocation. So we got this two point nine, plus we've got three point six million for this one also. So this was a joint grant. We have money already set aside for our twenty percent of this, so, well, actually, we might be paying ten percent of that, because Bentonville pay ten, we pay ten, so. So this is acknowledging these three grants that, that we received this grant cycle. I do have a grant pending to add some sidewalks where our new community center's gonna go, ten-foot sidewalks from there to the new Corner Woods Park, right up. Or Road, but.
That'd be nice. Off the killer road.
Yeah, that's an R-DOT grant, I, I've not heard anything back from them yet, but we probably won't hear from that till October. But on that one, we're competing with five hundred and four cities and seventy-four counties. But hey, throw it in there and see what happens. I asked for a half million there too, so. Half million's like a nice number, I like that. So anyway, I just want, if y'all, we could, now we've received these three grants.
So moved.
Motion, we have a second?
Making.
All in favor?
This just brings, yeah, this brings our total grant year to date up to what, eleven million, eleven million?
Yeah, let's see, I'll see. I, this is all.
Six.
Three point six on this.
Alright, so, so this is everything since two thousand nineteen. We have eleven, eleven million, three thirty, five fifty-nine that we received just since nineteen. And we've received more than that, I just went tracking. Because I've been applying for a lot of them, and, and other people have applied for them too, it's all. You know, public works, one of these, some of these are step grants that the police applied for, ones are granted, planning applied for, for the downtown study. And these two in yellow are just ones I've got pending. Money for the sidewalks I just told you about that I applied with R-DOT, which four hundred thousand is the aggressive amount that we got, put a hundred, and then the two fifty for the pickleball, so.
And these are grants that you're applying for, because I know previously, years ago, we had a grant writer, who would apply for the grant, and of course, there was a fee with that, but now that's.
No, I just do them, they're pretty easy to do. Yeah, that was a real difficult one. I, we do have a, a grant writer we still can contract with, it was a real complex one. So we, we still have an agreement with that person if we need to, but like I said, most of these are pretty simple. Gathering information, getting listeners support, different things like that. And again, we're, you know, I, I feel like as a city, we're pretty successful, and that kind of helps us stretch those dollars out, you know, because you're looking at sixteen million dollars, I know Chris had a tear in his eye when he was looking at it, he said, oh man, that's all you got. But, but this kind of really pushes, you know, where we can have more, more things happen in the community, so, anyway. So now I'm gonna turn it over to, I think I'm, no, no, yeah, yeah, Ryan, next. Impact fee, talk about the impact fee, and then Act five oh five.
Just real quick, well, on, on the impact fees, I, I think the council decided to, to seek outside recommendations with regards, so that we reached out to Justin Eichman. Justin Eichman did have considerations that, that he provided to us. A week ago, yesterday, I reached out to him, asking if he, if he wanted to put those into a, a mono ordinance. Quite frankly, I have not heard from him as, as of yet. I mean, last week was a, it was a short week, but I also know he's pretty good. Mayor has directed me to go ahead and do it, but it'd be my position, if we can, let's let Justin get it taken care of so long as it's, it's timely.
This is his specialty, right?
Well, I mean, he, he's got a lot more experience in it than, than anybody else. It's one of these things that, I mean, I, I could have gotten up to speed on it, but I think you guys made the determination to do so. He's come up with guidance, I'd just soon follow that guidance as, as he's providing it, rather than trying to make my interpretation of it, if that makes sense. So if not, I mean, if, if I need to get my hands dirty, I will absolutely do so, but I want to give him a little bit of time to see where he's at on that.
And I asked him for another day, because this, you know, we, this has been a few months since we approved this, so I just wanted the council to, to know where we're at.
We're missing, we have, we can't put into place, right, so. We're missing some money there.
So continue on, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no worries. With regards to the bill. Bill was, actually, it'll become law, I guess, August fourth, I believe, is, is the date pertaining to FOIA. Since we're dealing with FOIA on a regular basis, we figured it'd probably be a good idea just to briefly discuss it. I don't want to go through, through all of it, because a lot of it doesn't apply to the meetings, but I mean, I think that the number one consideration you guys need to be aware of, and I think the mayor's already indicated, is now for purposes of establishing a quorum. And for purposes of voting, you must be present. Absent a declaration of, of an emergency by the governor, so. Sorry, Joshua, this very well may be one of the last meetings you could attend.
No, I've attended every other one, and I knew this is the last one, I could do it, so I said, I'm gonna do it this one.
Well, and there may be a special meeting.
We could do the special one too, if, if we get.
I will indicate, however, that does not apply to non-voting members, so certainly staff and, and, and other people can appear remotely if necessary. They modified public meeting a little bit, and they, they kind of helped try to define it, and, and quite frankly, I think it opens it up a little bit to where council members can communicate with each other a little bit, even to the extent that it's about city business, however. Council members cannot discuss anything that they know or should know, or have a reason to believe may be coming up on, as an agenda item anywhere in the near future, and of course, near future, it is not defined. Quite frankly, my, my legal advice doesn't change. Understand, we've got a lot of folks here, and I think this is why I told Plan Commission, people are always skeptical, they, they're looking for transparency. It's just, it's just better to, to not create the appearance of an impropriety, so, so just be mindful of that. So I'm, I'm just trying to seclude you guys, you yourselves from each other. A, a couple of things it, it did do was it, it also added some things, it was, as pertains to executive session. Previously, you know, we had to, to jump through a whole bunch of hoops with regards to mediation or settlement negotiations when we were in litigation. This now allows us to do that, and we, you know, we do not have to provide notice to the public if, if we are in litigation and it's court ordered to mediate or, or settlement negotiation. It, it allows us to go into executive session for purposes of like cyber crime, or, you know, like cyber attacks and things like that, where we certainly don't want a corporate someone that would be in the audience or, or can hear what proactive measures were taken to avoid, you know, cyber crimes. Oh, let's see if there's anything else that was. The other thing that it added was, you know, communication with regards to, to polling. It's, it's really not appropriate for council members to give their opinion outside of an, an open meeting with regards to, to what's going on. So if, if a vendor or somebody who has a an agenda item coming up, it's, it's really not appropriate for them to, to ask Cody and then ask Josie to, to kind of get a feel for what the the, the council's going to be doing, or your opinion of it. Your opinion should be published publicly where, where people can hear it. I, I, I truly think that's, that's the vast majority of the changes. There, there's some other changes as it pertains to, to, to records, but I, I just wanted to highlight the ones that, that we'll see on a regular basis here at council meetings.
I got a question for you. So you were talking about executive session, litigation. I know previously attorneys were not allowed in executive session, are they allowed in there now?
You know, it has not been addressed in there. Now, what, what you can do, and, and this is similar to what you're able to do was discussions pertaining to employment, promotion, demotion. It used to just be with, with regards to employees, it now covers officials. City attorney is an official, but I don't know that that really hits it, and that's something that I would want to look in closer if, if I thought that we had a reason to go into executive session to see whether or not the, the city attorney should be allowed to, to come in. I, my advice right now would be no, absent being able to see something. The other thing I will say on this is legislators, you know, they, they prepare these, they, they, they draft these, and we're, we're looking at these, and we're, we're interpreting what we believe they mean. This will get modified by lawsuits and litigation and, and, you know, case law at some point, so. So there will be some test cases at some point that will further refine.
Yes, exactly, right.
Any questions for Brian?
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Alright, next is surplus of two thousand fifteen Dodge Ram. This is a fifteen hundred. This is the truck we have at the fire department, and it's also got an engine, maybe you're in the issue. We've already replaced this vehicle with one of these vehicles that we bought earlier in the year. This was a fire department vehicle, or, and we'd like to go ahead and surplus that, get rid of it. So. I'd like to make motion to surplus that, the V I N number's there for you too, Todd.
Got it.
So moved.
You got a motion, we have a second? All in favor? And you want to pose? Alright, next, and this comes up every year, so I just put this on the agenda. And I put a couple documents, Wendy's looking at one of them I put in there that was in the newspaper, here's another one that Todd sent me. So I just want to kind of give an update on, on fireworks, because I've seen a lot of, a lot of chatter about them. Pro and con, and, and I see it every single year. So I just want to kind of give a report of, of, of what it happened, you know, how our year went. So first of all, we had two fire calls. Both of them were very minor. One was up off of Gamble Road, somebody shot a firework into a bush and caught the bush on fire. Right by terrace. No, but, anyway, they caught a bush on fire up there. And then another one, just like shortly after that, there was a pile of debris in the roadway that caught on fire, a small pile, and the fire department responded to both of those very quickly, and that, that's all I know of, was some debris out there. But, you know, I, I ride around town quite a bit, and, you know, the first day, on the fifth, yeah, I seen quite a bit, but you know, it looked like they cleaned it up for the most part real good. Also, the fire department and myself put safety tips out the whole time. I, I shared everything the fire department did, plus I put some out there, and I think that helped prevent some serious fires, because we've actually had people put, you know, fireworks in the trash cans up against a house and, and, you know, caught them on fire, so. We had two in one night about three or four years ago, so. One of them went up in the attic and destroyed, you know, they actually told the house, another one got an air conditioner in it. But also, there was some miscommunication put out there. Most news media outlets reported our fireworks times correctly, which our fireworks times are July first through July fourth. That's been in effect since two thousand sixteen, okay? Yeah, we, we go eight to eleven of those four days, okay? However, one of our local TV stations, because I seen it, they threw it back at me five or ten times. Reported July first through July fifth. I have wrote to that TV station, and I said, hey, guys, would you contact somebody before you just put that in there? Because I, I Googled it, I looked through our website, and I, I didn't see where it was anywhere. It used to be. Also, our dispatch center, CENTCOM, they also had that bad information. Because we told people, you know, if you have a complaint on the fifth, call in, and they were initially telling, no, no, you can shoot till eleven o'clock, and I had to call Cody, and he got a hold of them, and they corrected that pretty quick, so. And, and next year, we'll, we'll make sure we put that out there. So I just want to kind of give an idea, you know, on the number of calls we got, you know, to the police. I, I asked them this morning for, for a report or an update. So on the first, they got one call. Which they were legal, but it's probably after eleven o'clock. They got two calls, or three calls on the second. They got one on the third, they got fourteen of them on the fourth. And, and again, I can see that, because I've seen a lot of people shooting them. On the fifth, they got twelve. On the sixth, they got six, and then yesterday, they got four. So it looked like it slowed down some. I did get a email from a concerned citizen. That's all it is, is concerned, and, and they would like you to reduce them, some, they thought five days in a row is too much. So we can take care of just what I just said, we're already just doing four, so I don't know where they got the five days, but it's, it's four days. Again, I, I bring it, we bring this every year, we had the discussion. We want to leave it like it is, I think we leave it like it is. A couple of people were upset, though, because they said, well, you know, the fifth on a Saturday, it's the weekend, and I get that, but the ordinance says one through four. Apparently fourteen or twelve people wanted to go ahead and shoot them anyway, so. I know the police have enforced them, I, I have a radio, I listen to them, they respond right away, they talk to the people, and usually takes care of it, so they've done a good job, but I think they bring one or two people in extra during these times too, plus they overlap their shifts and everything, so they, they cover it, so. What, what I'm bringing today is just kind of wanted to give an update, you know, where we're at. Some of these cities that are out there go longer than us. You know, some are shorter. I know a, a neighboring city, they go third through to fourth only. But I, but I have a police scanner too, and I listen to it, and people are still shooting them after those hours, and, you know, so I don't know. There's some cities out there don't even allow them, and they're still. But I guess my only conversation is, do we want, do we need to change it, or we leave it alone? I don't know. This next year, it looks like it falls on a Saturday. So the, the Saturday thing wouldn't even come into play there, so, I don't know, I want to have at least a discussion, and, and, and then, anyway.
One of the things I heard was, for the majority they're okay with the way it is. Some people said that if, if it falls on a weekend, then maybe extend it one day if it falls on a weekend. But, you know, how often does that happen? And then also, I've noticed too that there's a lot of the cities around us, it's the no aerial fireworks attached to a stick. I'm just curious if we've not, if we, have we looked at that in the past? Is it something we took away? Is it something? Because it seems like that's pretty common, and we don't have that, so I'm just like. That can be very damaging.
I don't think we make concern. John, you want to come up and talk about the aerial fireworks with Robert or somebody? If you have any concerns, come on up here so they can hear you.
I think he said Joan.
We've been over this forever, ever, ever, dude. I did actually come up with the ordinance several years ago. And compared it with other cities on the aerial sticks, and there was exceptions made for permitted fireworks displaced by the fire department and people who owned land that were not in the subdivision. The other deal was, how many complaints did we have this time?
Like a total of forty-one over seven days.
How many?
Both of them were to.
How many citizens are in the city of Centerton?
Twenty, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-two.
You're gonna say more. The majority wins. We are celebrating our freedom, okay? And I do agree that, and I've said in the past, when you have the weekend, and you do cut it off at the fourth. And people work seven days a week, odd, odd hours and everything. But when the fourth falls on a Friday, and those other people have worked tonight, they get a chance to set them off, or, you know what I mean, and and, yeah, I understand about dogs, kids, I got all that. I got two big, great Pyrenees's. And I live right next to the county, and it doesn't matter what time of year it is, you're hearing boos all the time. But the other night, it was still going even after, and trust me, when a Pyrenees barks, you stick to the ceiling like a cat. So I understand that, but it is the celebration. That's the Fourth of July. It comes along once a year, so we have a few days, and you can make those accommodations for, you know, special needs, your pets, all that stuff. Especially your pets, put them inside where they don't get out, and our folks are chasing after them, the dogs are, you know, getting hurt and stuff. But that's what we're celebrating, and to take that away, I've seen it depleted over these years from. But that's all we're celebrating. And to take that away, I've seen it depleted over these years from all these other cities. And yes, we do grow in the population, but again, forty some compared to twenty-seven thousand population. And I said one of the highest points out there, I don't even have to come into town. I can see it all. And I mean, it, it's, it's gorgeous. I love it. Uh, even the booms, I mean, it, it, you can see it all, and it looked great. It looked like a war zone, I'm sure some people. Or sounded like it, but it was a beautiful display by everybody. If everybody would just take the time to clean up their mess.
Right.
Would let them extinguished before you put them in the trash can, you know. Uh, or put them in your garage next to your fuel tanks, whatever. Um, they, so we bet it, bet all kinds of stuff. But um, I think that the Saturdays, when you have the fourth on a Friday, and you know, you got a weekend, you know, let them, let them set them off. Just we'll cut the hours off. Uh, and I think, like you said, most people did it bite bite. And if you do extend that on the weekend, even Sunday if you want to, but probably just Saturday would be great. You know, Saturday would be a good one um to, to, to add to it, you know?
I think if you're going to do it that way, I think if it falls on a weekend, then maybe you start it later. Maybe you don't offer the first or second.
Into the first.
Yes, that's, that's.
If, if. Yeah, shorten and bring it into it, yeah.
You know, your community, if, if your community maybe is a, a, a more mature community, you're probably going to get a lot more people that are going to feedback with late, later hours that, you know, that's, that's too.
Yeah, you shorten that day, you bring the thing back.
Sometimes your communities are where these rules come from. They're formed by the people that are in the communities. Our community, the median age back in early two thousands was sixty. You know, and now it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight or whatever.
Younger than me.
Uh, so the rules will change. But I do think if you're going to shift it and you're going to allow the, the weekend,
Yeah.
maybe you pull it back. I don't know that you, because we are so, we offer one of the most generous
Yes.
times, you know, to be able to do it. I think if you're willing to do that, then, then you don't have to give them more, because we really.
I've got an idea, just extended the weekend for those who are working Monday through Friday at nights and stuff.
Just do it two through five, and it's still four days, and it shifts it one day.
Does you make that exception?
Because you're, you're, you're going to keep shifting during the week, yeah.
Matter.
That Saturday, if it falls right, you include that Saturday to allow it, and that's.
Just do it two through five, that resolves it too, because that, that would have resolved it here, because that, most people wanted, you know, they say, hey, we have the weekend off and.
Yeah, they're not done by the fifth. They're still blowing stuff.
Right.
Whether you do it or not.
That though, you also take your resources and you, you don't have to pull them in to go chase that.
Yeah, right.
Because you, you're gonna, you're gonna have people going to do it. It doesn't matter what you do, they're going and you do.
Not having to remember, oh, it's a weekend or whatever, if it's uh, you know.
Exactly, exactly. It's the Fourth of July. We're celebrating our independence. And let's not take that away from those folks, not to mention like we brought up. We have businesses that sell fireworks here. A lot of cities, you don't sell them anywhere. And it's restricted completely. So uh, but if you weren't looking at restricting the aerial with the sticks, I mean, I, I know that, trust me, I lived here in town too. I know you pick up a buddy yard. But there's a solution for it, but that's a lot of the stuff you see.
Right.
Well, the rockets, the parachutes, I mean, there's so many things. It's hard to just narrow down to bottom.
Right.
Exactly. Everything's aerial.
Yeah.
It's just one day. Kind of those things you can be chasing your tail all the way around.
Right.
I think.
Changing stuff.
I think the hours are, are good.
Eight to eleven.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable one, and, and I know that's not going to cover everybody that has to work a, a shift.
Oh, but you can't do it at this time of year until it gets dark anyway, which is really a good time, about nine thirty. I mean, if you really want to see your stuff.
I think, I think we've been very fair, very considerate. Um, you know, and some of it just comes down to being a good neighbor and being respectful to the, you know, the freedom that we've given as far as from eight to eleven. You know, maybe we're a little more strict about if you're still firing them at, at midnight, then, you know, it's a no tolerance policy.
I was going to say, I think if you go to switching it based on weekends and all that, it's just going to create more confusion.
Yeah.
Keep it consistent, and there's no way to legislate respect and courtesy. So the people that are going to go outside of the limits are going to do it regardless of what it is. Whether you put it, you know, seven days.
Don't go from that, that's.
Do it for ten days. You know, that's just the way they are. So I don't think there's any way to legislate and get it to be.
That was the biggest.
It's not going to change the behavior of the people that are doing it.
That's the biggest.
And some folks aren't aware of it. They're just not.
That was the biggest response I got. But I'm like, you can't for, I mean, we're not going to have police driving in and out of every street, so you do have to call. And it's no different than, and I was telling Brian earlier, no, the no solicitation, like if you, if you want to enforce, you have to call somebody so they know there's an issue.
Right. There's forty-two complaints, and that was probably from ten people.
Forty-one.
Yeah, I, I guarantee it.
But back, back to the fifth though, I mean, because you know, fireworks stands there saying, okay, discount it, you know, fifty percent off, just want to get rid of it. And they're going to go shoot them. Maybe y'all should consider going to second to the fifth.
Yeah.
Right, because.
And then you still cover the extra daily. Because first, I, I didn't hear hardly anybody shoot anything off in the first and second. I mean, I didn't usually, I go out water long, so.
Yeah, I was surprised with the fifth amount that was still being shot off.
Just don't want to see us restrict our freedoms with our celebrating life.
Yeah, we should be.
Not any more than we're already doing.
What do you think?
I would just like to make accommodations so our services are not
some cool stuff.
chasing after something when they can be doing something else.
You want me to come back, you want me to come back next month then with updating ordinance for two, second to fifth?
Yeah.
I'd like to see you come through the first, eat the times.
I'd never agree, I'd never agree to do it.
Same time, same time's eleven.
Make it what it'll happen.
For my, yeah.
All right, yeah, you good with it? Josh Shaw, you good with it?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, I'll, I'll bring back, we're back in order to six minutes. All right, that's all I, that's all I have. Anybody got any other business? All right, so we have uh coffee with the mayor this Saturday. It's a week earlier. They've got this big picnic out there in the park going on the third, Saturday. So we're, we're going to move to the twelfth. Come on by. Uh, I will, anybody who's listening online or anything, I will have no soliciting stickers with me, so if you don't get a chance to come get them here, I'll bring them over there too. So come on out and uh, love to have you. Drink some coffee and hear from us. And something like make motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Thank you.